The June twenty eighth special NISD. Whoop, sorry. Thought I was still on the school board. City of Nacogdoches Council Meeting, Mr. Bowden, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Thank you, Mayor. That's about for a moment. Hail and Father, we want to thank you for allowing us to see another day. A day not promised, but only your goodness, grace, and mercy allowed us to see this day. Father, we thank you for these servants, the mayor, city council, the staff. I give thanks for the way of service that they have chosen to take up on behalf of citizens of Nacogdoches. We all come to this room this evening as human beings, carrying burdens, joy, and even hope. Trusting that you alone can hold us together in your love and peace. Help us, Lord, to trust you more, more than our fears and our wounds, and even our accomplishment. In the name of Jesus, who perfect love set us free from all our fears. Amen.
If you will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance of the United States and Texas Flags, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, we'll get to open forum. We have one request tonight, and it is Mr. Charles Massey. Would you please come forward, please? State your name for the record and.
You want me to spell it?
Oh, no, we got it.
I'm Charles Massey. I live on one thirty-one Walker Avenue, which I think I'm in Roy's district. Come by and see me, Tom. But my concern is because I can't, I don't remember the year, but I know it's been a couple of years, the five dollar fee they took out for road improvements. And I just want to see if that fee has been, has it been allocated for other funds that's used for road maintenance? Because, to be honest with you, and you guys all know, the roads around here are horrible. Especially Mound Street. I don't understand why it's never been paved. I know when I worked at the hospital, Memorial Hospital, back in two thousand thirteen, it was still this way. And I don't understand why that particular road, because that's a well-traveled road. And the potholes, you know, they just, they're not up to date and, you know, and filled. And I think there's a concern there. And to see, as a mayor, to see, make sure that that fee is being charged to the street maintenance. And it's allocated just for that. Because, you know, I pay for it like everybody else that pays the water bill. And also, the code enforcement, I'm very proud of that department. I believe they're understaffed. They need to be upgraded. Because of the houses around here, you know, my house is built in nineteen twenty-three. And it's still standing, but I keep it up. And, but there's other houses around there. There's a lot of rental houses. And I would like to see the code enforcement stay on top of these people that own these houses, that they are kept updated, because that's property taxes. That's revenue for the city. You know, instead of having to raise taxes, you know, it appraises the value of the house. The value of my house has tripled because I'm in a location, location area. And I would like to see, but I've got several rentals that's been happening on my street. And I've had to call code enforcement on them. And, but I would like to see that staff upgraded, that they can do their job and be on time. And, and hold these people responsible for that. You know, as a new mayor, because I know your business is downtown, and I love this downtown, a lot of people do. A lot of walking distance. The Oak Grove Cemetery, am I out?
You can finish.
Okay. The Oak Grove Cemetery, I've called the street maintenance on that sidewalk. That, there's a lot of walkers that go up and down. That particular area in front of that street, the sidewalk is horrible. And it should be because, you know, they've redone that church, and there's going to be a lot of visitation there. So I'd like to see something done to that sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is the regular agenda. We'll go to item A, receive a report and give staff direction regarding the city manager search. Ms. Paul, please.
She said she has to step out to get a document. She'll be right back.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. You want to go to B?
If she's just going to get a document.
Okay.
I mean, all right. I mean, I'm perfectly happy with that if, if that's the, the way I want to go.
Yeah, let's just go to B.
Let's go to B.
Okay, all right. B, we'll, we'll pass on A and come back when Benita gets back and we get through with B and C. Hold a discussion regarding auto and pedestrian safety at the intersection of Durst Street and Douglas Road. Councilmember Hockley.
Mayor and council, there have been a number of concerns brought to me from constituents in the Southwest Ward and others in the city regarding the auto and pedestrian safety up the hill on, at Durst Street and Douglas Road and the, the way those streets come together. And I just wanted to, to bring this item to the council for us to have a discussion and hear from staff what the options are, and also give the, the public an opportunity to discuss the options and, and their concerns with that area. So, Mayor, if, if it's okay with everyone else, I'd like to start with public comment before we hear from staff.
Sure. Any public comment on the item?
Yes. Hi, Jay.
Jeffrey Murray is my legal name. People know me as J-Sol. So I literally just a month ago moved to that neighborhood where this intersection is. I haven't had a whole lot of experience with it before, but it's kind of one of the main ways to get to, to and from my house. Because, so you come off of Main and then there's South Sanders right there. So it's pretty much South Sanders and you got Durst, and then you got, obviously, you got Main. And there's stop signs, and as you're coming up, there's a stop sign here on, on Durst. And then they continue on to continue into, onto, onto Main Street. The issue is, then you have Sanders that's there that also has a stop sign. So I think people get a little confused as to whose turn it is to go. Also, you have the people that are coming off of Main, turning onto either Durst or Sanders, that kind of take that turn a little wide. I almost got sideswiped in my brand-new vehicle the other day with someone coming, coming by and just not really paying attention, and they had to kind of swerve to avoid hitting me. The issue is, I feel like there's something that could be done there, whether it be a speed bump, whether it be some type of light. I don't know what, how, how you even make that work. But it's just, it's a very odd intersection. And I feel like, I'd like something to get done now before it gets to the point where we have to do something about it because there's some major tragedy that happens there. I've talked to a lot of people who have actually been, you know, ran into and, you know, been into wrecks in that, in that intersection. I call it the intersection of death, essentially. I mean, it's, it's, it's essentially, that's what it could be. And I would love to hear some ideas as to how we can get that fixed, or get something done to, to kind of slow that, that flow of traffic there. That's all.
Thank you, Jay. I, I want to add to his comments because he and I've, we've spoken on this, this topic. And that's a, that's an area that I travel frequently also as I either go home or traveling down into the, the neighborhoods there to keep an eye on how things are. I know that we've talked about how the, that intersection has been that way for a very long time. And Mr. Bartlett will come up in a second to discuss that with us. This is not designed for us to come here and take action on this item, just purely for us to start the conversation and see where we can move. Mr. Bartlett?
Mayor, Council Steve Bartlett, City Engineer, Director of Public Works. Mr. Hockley and I, of course, talked a little bit early about this. And I guess the point of the item for you was to tell you that we will move forward at your direction as staff and kind of put together a little summary. So we want to bring some updated accident data. Mr. Tarravela and I have already begun discussing that. So we'll bring that to you. We'll look at some solutions. Recognizing, of course, that the two streets that are problematic are not our streets, not our roads, and we can't necessarily just realign them. So there's a Tech Dot component here, and so we want to coordinate with them. We did this a number of years ago. We kind of looked at some early stuff when Mr. Jeffords was here, and we had some questions. So we'll kind of flush that back out, update the data as far as accident data, and kind of show you what some ideas might, might be, and some things that may not be, that may be prohibitive about what we can do. So if you'll give us a little bit of time, we'll put all that together in a kind of a, a mini reports, the best way to put it, and send that to you, then we can have a discussion about alternatives after that, if that's satisfactory, so.
Is that Douglas Road and Durst Road that's not ours?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Sanders is ours.
And West Main is ours.
And West Main is ours. Correct.
That's West Main behind this intersection. When does it become Douglas Road?
I mean, at, at that intersection, it's Douglas West, yes.
Okay, west if there is Douglas, but down the hill.
That's the state highway designation is Douglas Road, yes.
Again, I just wanted to bring that to us, to the group, so we could start this conversation. Mr. Bartlett has been very helpful, and Assistant Chief Tarravela has already gotten started on this also. So I'm very grateful for y'all getting started on it. And I just want to reiterate to the, the people that live in that area and in other areas of town that if you have a concern, that we may not be able to solve the problem immediately, but we will get to it, and, and our staff are responsive, and I know that the council members are too. So thank you for that.
Sure. And if you have any particular comments or questions, email them to me in the meantime, and we'll try to make sure we've covered that whenever we put together a little summary for you as well.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions or discussion for anybody? Okay, does that mean we did see two?
No, we have not done see.
Okay, then we'll go to the next item, hold a discussion, give staff direction regarding the city speed hump policy.
So again, this is a, a conversation starter to bring for council and, and staff to discuss this and members of the public. Mr. Bartlett and I have also discussed this for almost a year now on the speed hump installation policy that is circa two thousand five. And the, the hurdles to get those installed are fairly cumbersome, in my opinion. And I'd like for the, the staff to be able to present maybe an, an opportunity for us to revisit that policy based on the, the will of the council and, and give the public an opportunity to discuss it also. So again, if, if we could have public comment first, if there is any.
Okay, any public comment? Okay, go ahead. Just state your name, please.
Grace Garrigan. So I live at the corner of Logan's Port and Martinsville. And it's a very dangerous intersection. And I know that according to the speed bump policy, it can't interfere with an emergency route. And I was looking at the emergency routes, and King and Martinsville are both emergency routes. And I know speed bumps aren't the end-all for traffic calming. So I think that Martinsville especially could use traffic calming. It doesn't have to be a speed bump. But if that is something that could be added to the discussion all around town, I think it would be useful. We have a crosswalk there for pedestrians at Lenana Creek Trail. But nobody, I've never had anybody stop for me when I'm trying to cross that street. And again, a speed bump, it sounds like couldn't happen there since it's an emergency route. But maybe if there were bump outs or something else. I don't know what other traffic calming measures are ever considered in town. And I think those would be something we should evaluate.
Thank you, Ms. Garrigan, very much.
And yes, thank you for, for your email on, on this topic also. I greatly appreciate it. Just one more thing on this. I think my intent and with my discussion with Mr. Bartlett is not just to look at this specific speed hump policy. It's to consider how we do traffic calming measures and empowering, empowering staff to not have as many hurdles if there's a necessity. So if you would share with us.
Steve Bartlett again. And to answer first question, by the way, yes, both Martinsville and King are published as emergency services routes, which right now would be prohibitive to have speed humps along. And there's some valid reasons for that. You don't want to drive an ambulance over those and fire trucks slow down. So I will tell you, just in our free time, we, we can thank you for laughing at that. We, we began to look at this policy a number of months ago, back when we had an extra engineer here, a young engineer that helped us, and to try to develop maybe some possible alternatives to the way speed humps were made that could facilitate some emergency traffic, but still act as a traffic calming. And so we're looking at some other cities. Houston, I think, has taken on an interesting approach to this. So we've got some data. He started to compile possibly some revisions to this policy. And it was a work in progress that we pulled on and off of. I will not tell you it's complete. But we've kind of started the process of researching that. So we'd like to move forward with that. There will always be pros and cons to speed humps. And that's, you're, you're not going to see a clean policy come out that doesn't have negatives. The current policy, in, in your right, Councilman, is prohibitive. It has a cost for all the residents. It has almost a, you know, nearly a hundred percent concurrent, or seventy-five, excuse me, percent concurrent. So you have to have a lot of folks that want to do it and folks that want to write a check. And so that may or may not be the way council wants to address it in the future. There are other, there are other road diet ways to have traffic calming. One of the first things we do always, and you know, we get these probably once or twice a month, a lot of them from y'all and from just call-ins, is we go out and actually do a speed study. So we have stealth speed equipment that looks like a telephone box or something that monitors you. And we also have the kind that slow you down because we flash signs to tell you how fast you're going. But it's interesting that a vast majority of the time, we find out that almost all the traffic is obeying the speed limit or very close, and we have just a few people that are bad actors. And so that's where we have candidates for traffic enforcement, which, which has been a struggle because PD has been understaffed, especially in the traffic area. But we find that sometimes. So the perception may be that everybody's speeding, and what we have is a few people that are speeding frequently in the neighborhood. So it's good for us to try to figure that out sometimes we can do it. But we find other streets where, just historically, the speeds are, you know, fifteen percent, twenty percent above, or whatever. So for, for us, we need to make those assessments first before we figure out a traffic calming sequence. So we'll work through that. It's kind of like we did on Burke and, and redid on Burke. And so we, we want to kind of go through those analysis on case by case, too, and make sure that this policy incorporates that kind of look at these streets. So we're not just putting speed humps everywhere either. So remember, those are additional maintenance costs for us, too. So you'll see some budgetary need for that as well. So, but anyway, if it's okay, we'll come, we'll step back, we'll look at it. And we'd like to, again, bring you some, an update and some information a little bit later on this summer.
You know, a couple of times I've come to you about streets that, there was a request from the citizen. And I was surprised that the strenuous requirements.
Yes.
This, I mean, it's almost impossible to get a, a speed hump up, plus the cost to the citizens on that street. And it's almost like it's got to be a one-hundred percent buy-in from all citizens. But let me just ask that question right quick. Does every citizen on that street or in that sector, I think they call it sectors, do they have to agree to the speed hump?
Councilman, let me look back here. I believe it is seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five percent?
Along that segment of the street. Thank you. And, and then the cost part of that as well depends on how fast over the eighty-fifth percentile speed they are. So if it's a lot of speeders, the cost can go to zero for the resident. If it's just a few speeders, which would, which we would interpret the saying by, we don't have a significant problem, but if you still want the speed hump, then you're paid for it. So there's kind of a balancing scale. Council may want to go a completely different direction. I'm just saying, this, this was a two thousand five council-approved policy. That, by the way, was an update to a previous policy that was a hundred percent, required a hundred percent concurrent with everybody that it said was affected by that. Guess how far we had to measure on big, long streets? It was everybody, you know? So it, you think impossible, it was really impossible before. And it probably crafted not to be easy on purpose so that we could control where they went. But this one still has a lot of hurdles, Councilman, and you're right.
Yeah, and, and the thing is, the one locations that, you remember the couple that was blind?
Yes.
Now, they still complaining about speeders, you know? But you mentioned about maybe putting up devices. Texas Manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices, is that one of the items, that's a speed humps? Or it could be a speed gauge? Is that part of the devices?
So there's a number, just in traffic planning, in transportation planning, there are a number of ways to do traffic calming. So speed humps and speed pillows are just one of those things. But making, funny enough, making roads narrower is another way to do it. We call that a road diet. And I'm not proposing this necessary solution everywhere, but we will look at each specific side and try to do it. You know, if somebody wants to drive eighty miles an hour down a twenty-four-foot-wide street, it, it is going to happen. And it's just literally going to take enforcement to stop that. But in general, I, I've always used this example. I lived at the north end of Regay Street for a long time. And it is very, very easy on Regay to be going forty-five miles an hour and not even know you're doing it because the street offers the comfort to drive that speed. There are other streets here that if you went forty-five down, you would take your life, you would know it, you wouldn't do it. So that's the approach we're talking about with, with road diets and with things that are naturally, things that reduce your speed, is it makes you uncomfortable to drive that fast, except for a few people who are not uncomfortable about any fast speeds. So, so those are the kind of things we'll try to deploy. All those things have a cost. All those things have an impact. And I will tell you every time, and we haven't done many speed humps, but when I was consulting with the city, we did a few, there were always folks that complained about the speed hump, as many as complained about not having a speed hump. So it's going to be a mix, no matter what we do. And that's why the high level of concurrence from adjoining is, is there because council really wanted to know that, in this case, the majority anyway, were, were for it and not going to stand up here and complain about what you just put in, so.
So, so I used to live on South Sanders Street, by the way, and we moved there before our children learned to drive on purpose for part of that. But I'm hoping, I'm wondering if there, if we can immediately do some things with signage, with analyzing the stop signs. I always forget when I come to the intersection, you're talking about how, how many people are supposed to stop here? Who, who is the one who's supposed to go? So maybe some, you know, or maybe even making it, everybody has to stop when they get to that intersection. But just analyzing the stop signs and who has to stop, putting signage, signage children at play. You know, the street is also filled with children, so slow children. And then finally, where the Lenana Creek comes, I just drove and did not see the gentleman. I mean, just today or yesterday, because there are bushes right there and had no idea that he was going to want to, I mean, we were fine. He watched out for me, but.
Sure.
I'm the one who should have stopped. And I think the street, we used to have street paint, it used to be better painted. And I think when we redid the street, maybe the, you know, that really showed that was a crosswalk for the, for the trail. So anything we can do, the cheaper ends of lots of signage, checking stop signs, and alerting people to that that's a crosswalk.
Sure.
With brighter paint.
You're, you're referring to Martinsville?
Yes, I'm talking about Martinsville. I don't know what.
No, no, that's fine. Want to make sure I understood, yeah. No, I, I agree.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. And we have even used some others, SFA, working with SFA, we did this. But we use a lot of flashing pedestrian signs. Those are not always appropriate in residential neighborhoods because they flash all night. And so, but, but things that are at least attention-getters, so.
And, and also even the shrubbery.
Sure.
When you come to those intersections, so you can see around to see if somebody is coming from that other direction. So those quick things, and then, of course, we'll take it back up when you have more suggestions.
And I think we can work on deploying things like that. This is similar conversation we had about Burke Street a while back. You know, we could do some things, not everything, because not everything was curable. But absolutely, I think the end result is maybe we can reduce the problems. I'm not sure they can always be completely eliminated. We live in the oldest town with the oldest streets, so we, we will do our best. So, yeah, if you will, let us put together this. If you have thoughts like you've given to me now about, you know, we need to make it easier to do it or less folks to concur, I'll kind of start with a draft like that, and we can bounce it around. And so if we just work together this summer, I mean, maybe develop a, a new policy on this, I think it'd be great. And we've got some construction details we want to go with it on, maybe some different kind of speed pillows and things to do, so. Thank you, Mr. Bartlett. Any other questions?
Just want to make note on one thing that you and I have talked about at pretty great length, and that's the, the speed limits are, are actual limits on what we can set speed limits to. Excuse me. And what the eighty-fifth percentile speed, basing our judgments on the eighty-fifth percentile speed, what is our statutory limit on the, how low we can make a speed limit?
So twenty-five miles an hour, with the exception of school zones, is as low as we can make a speed limit. We have several dozens, as your previous city attorney told you, we've got a lot of spots in towns that we stuck up twenties, whatever, whoever did that, but they're probably not enforceable. And so we're going to have a movement to remove those and replace them with twenty-fives or go back to the default, which is, which is thirty. So, but twenty-five would be the lowest that we could post.
And so that may be something that we want to have a discussion about also is, are we going to go with twenty-five or are we going to go with thirty?
Correct.
And, and then the other thing on the eighty-fifth percentile, basing our, and I know that's what Tech Dot uses. That's their benchmark also. But recognizing that if you have a, a segment of drivers, there's fifteen percent that are going above that speed.
Sure.
So, you know, it may be small numbers in, in total, but it doesn't take, it doesn't take a lot of incidents to be catastrophic. It only takes one.
Understood.
So, but you and I have already had that discussion. I just wanted to make sure that I made that clear. And certainly, we don't want to inhibit our emergency services personnel from being able to get to an emergency. So just trying to balance all of those needs at once, and I know that you'll come up with a great solution for us.
Well, we, we've got to be consistent with law. And so we need to be able, if we're enforcing things, twenty-five miles an hour, we need to have it as an enforceable action by council. And we also need to be consistent with the way we do things in the road. So, yeah, it's important to balance the, if we're challenged, my point is if we're challenged legally, we need to make sure these things follow, follow regulation and, and are typical. So eighty-fifth percentile is a typical engineering evaluation method. And if we use a number higher than that, we may struggle with some defense someday. And that's the only reason we do kind of standards, so. Any other questions, we'd be happy to answer.
One last comment. I know that in the policy, that there's a, a portion that the, the, the residents have to pay. I, I think as you're thinking about that, and we can certainly discuss it amongst the group, I think that needs to be removed. We're not, people are not paying for curb and gutter now in general. So let's, let's, if that's, if everyone else is good with that. I don't like putting the burden on individual residents when there's, it's a safety issue.
Sure. If y'all can give me a head nod, I'll probably leave that out of the first draft. Is that reasonable?
But there are some locations, I don't want to call their names, that put in speed humps at the city's expense.
Correct. There's also speed bumps that were put in thirty-five and forty-five years ago.
Absolutely.
That really aren't even necessary anymore. Because there's no children there anymore. I mean.
So my question, when you do that, it just makes me laugh. Sorry. My question is, are there places that you think the residents should incur the cost and other places where they shouldn't? I'm just trying to imagine if, for example, you know, maybe a subdivision or an HOA or something like that. If there are, I mean, in, in general, I think that the residents of our city should not be paying things for the roads. But, but I'm open if there's some situation.
Councilman, let, let me answer this. What I think was philosophical in this, I think, I think that if, under whatever warrants were established in a policy, if the speed humps were not warranted under that policy, but. If the speed humps were not warranted under that policy, but a group or the majority of a group wanted them. Then there was reasons to think that they could pay to get them. And I think that's what, was, was the foundation of that. So do we think they should pay or not, really, of course, that's really truly your decision. But I think, understand, I think it was when it's not necessarily warranted under these guidelines. We changed the warrants, but I'm not thinking that we're proposing necessarily to burden them with that, uh, in a new policy.
Okay.
Again, y'all's decision, y'all's call. Couldn't be any more fun, could it?
This is the, the sausage making of local government.
It is the sausage making, so.
Thank you so much.
All right, we'll look in, we'll, we'll be back to you in the near future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Okay, we'll go back up to item A. Sorry, Ms. Benita.
I'm sorry.
Uh-uh. Uh, receive a report and give staff direction regarding the city manager search.
Good evening. Just wanted to give you an update. Um, the position has been open tomorrow will be two weeks. And thus far, we have fifty-five, um, resumes and cover letters or resumes in some cases. And, um, so we're, I mean, we're doing pretty well. And there, there are gonna be some that, um, extremely qualified and they're, as we know with any process like this. There will be some that probably, um, should not have applied. Um, thus far, I have done an initial, um, culling of the applications and we're at about twenty-five. And that is a, that is a good number. Um, and if it's open until about thirty days, we're looking at, and that's what I just gave to you, the process. We're looking at about July fourteenth. July fourteenth. And then, uh, what I am, what I am recommending is that after July fourteenth, we, we're in the process of finalizing some questions. Um, anticipate there being two sets for council and maybe a, a set of questions for staff. That we send out a written exercise for the, for those candidates that meet those, that meet the initial culling on the seventeenth of July. And giving them a, about a week to submit, uh, to complete and submit it, that brings it to about July twenty-fourth. Um, if necessary, let's say, again, we're at twenty-five, and I'm not sure exactly how many more we'll receive between now and the seventeenth. But, um, at twenty-five, let's say twenty of them return the, uh, written exercise and, um, are still in contention. That's still a lot of people to interview. So, um, we're recommending maybe doing a Zoom call. Um, and you guys can, uh, jump in at any time with ideas about this process. And we're hoping that the Zoom calls will, um, allow us to, um, I don't wanna say eliminate, but allow us to further narrow the field of applicants. And then, um, we'll, hypothetically, the ideal is to get down to maybe four or five that will actually come to the city. And, um, so after the Zoom call, we'll do background investigations, pretty detailed. I'm recommending that we outsource that to a company that, that can do a really good job and go into, uh, great detail. Verifying some of what we've received from those candidates. And then we'll have a, um, an in-person interviews and we're looking at that being approximately two days. Um, and so once we're a little closer to that, I'm gonna ask that the council kind of, uh, begin to, um, consider what two days you would like those to be. So we can get that noti- uh, notification out to the candidates. Um, but other than that, I'm open to direction.
So I have a question.
Okay.
Did we publish anywhere that we will accept applications until July fourteen?
No, no ma'am, it's open until filled. So technically, we can fill it now and, um, but, um, the, uh, I understood from the council that you wanted it open about thirty days. And so thirty days would be actually that weekend, and so I brought it up a day or two to make it that Friday. And then the following Monday, we will send out the, um, written exercise.
So I, I'm trying to think if there's a way to speed it up. I mean, uh, you know, 'cause we have fifty-five and then twenty-five that are, you know, people to look at. So, um, maybe even if, if we, I mean, we might accept the, the applications all the way up. But we could, I'm thinking we could send the written exercise out even before that if possible, but I know you're overworked and
Well, wha- whatever, um, someone in my office can do that, it'll, it'll be done via email to all the candidates. Um, and it's just whatever the council directs us to do.
And when you say to all of the candidates, you don't mean the full slate?
Correct, the, the twenty-five.
So even next week, we could send out the, so we might have a, whoever we have, you know, I, I don't know if the, if, when the earliest is. We could have the written exercise ready to send out. When is, when might that be next?
Again, we're finalizing the questions and we'll have a set of questions. We've split the questions into, um, questions that we will send out. And, um, if you would like to, I can get those to you, you can call them, you know, and decide which ones you would like for the, um, exercise. And then we will have, uh, questions for the in-person. I have a set of questions that I'm gonna finalize for the in-person interviews as well. So I can, um, send those out, uh, as early as maybe tomorrow or Friday, um, for the, um, written exercise. And you can let me know by, I can do it simply by the number of people who are saying yes or no to a particular question. And put, gather those together and mail it out, um, next week sometime. I will not be here, but someone in my office will, uh, be glad to do it.
I don't wanna put in, I think you're just doing such a wonderful job. I don't wanna put a unnecessary burden on you. So I'm, I'm trying to figure out how to move it up, you know, and then go ahead and get the exercises and then bring them back. And then if somebody stellar comes in after that, we can send out the exercise, you know, again, to one or two people. But at least we would be moving a little, you know, maybe even a, a week or, or ten days quicker.
That's fine, yes ma'am, we can do that.
But that's just my opinion, I'm open to, you know, obviously.
I mean, it's, we're really talking about a week, really a, a week or ten days more. Um, is it going to cause complications for you if you send out, if you do send out the exercises now? And then you're having to track those to completion, whatever timeline we give them, and then have to do that again? It just seems like there's, we're introducing more variables into the process and it's, it's just, I, I know we wanna get this done, but it's two weeks. I mean, if we say the fourteenth, that's two weeks from Friday. So I, I mean, I'm, I'm open to whatever the council thinks, um, but I, I don't see, what are we going to gain by having those answers sooner?
A week. That's it, I mean, you're right.
And July fourteenth is a field date. I mean, you know, you're saying that's the last day you're gonna take applications?
No, sir, uh, but it's, it's going to be our, it's going to be our initial cutoff. Absolutely, so if there's still, it will be the con- uh, possibility of what Councilman Huckabee is talking about. Um, but after thirty days, the
The talent pool goes down.
Yes, thank you.
I think we should keep it simple. Do it as soon as it's reasonable. And because if, if we start, well, we didn't, well, look, here's another one, here's another one. It will dribble out through August and then it'll be September. I think we need to be cut and dried about it. I think with fifty-five candidates, we've got the best possible people who've got on it early. So to me, I think the sooner we can do this, the better, and it's less confusing for people. Because in a city manager, we want someone that's on top of things, not just waiting around and coming in at the last moment, so.
So, so I wanna kind of add on to what you're saying. Uh, I, I had someone reach out to me today, uh, a friend, not someone that's applying. But they said, I have this friend that's considering applying, is it still open? And so it's taking some time for the word to get out that people that are not specifically in ICMA or in TCMA. Um, we may be missing some that are not getting enough time to get all the materials together. 'Cause if I was trying to apply for a job right now, there are ten thousand other things going on in my life. And if they, in all reality, we're going to get someone that probably already has a job. So I, I want us to get it done in a, a timely manner and I don't wanna waste time. But I also don't want to say, here's our hard and fast deadline for the first review and it's only been up for two weeks. But fifty-five's a lot. But how many of those fifty-five are in your, in your top group?
She said twenty-five, right?
Possible.
So roughly half. So, so just balancing tho- all of those concerns, we wanna leave it open long enough, but we don't wanna leave it on, open too long.
I'm good with this. I mean, you're right, a week is a week and I, I'm thinking of Chief Kipling are over there and thinking, you know, we're hanging in there and we appreciate it too. But it, it, it's okay with me to just go ahead and, and do that.
Okay, so we're good as written? Okay, the, the fourteenth and then the exercise goes out on the seventeenth with a return on the twenty-fourth to that, at least that initial twenty-five? Okay, um. I will be back with them, with you guys once I have them all and, um, discuss how you want to evaluate the responses.
Okay, all right. Now, let me ask you a question. On how we evaluate the responses? And also, when we get into, say, we decide to do Zoom interviews. Okay, that will be in closed session, right?
That's my preference, yes sir, absolutely.
Okay. By law, would that be okay? Or do we need clarification?
Well, without practicing law from the, uh, from, from the table, I, I would say yes. Once, once you start the, the, the process of going through those applications, that's appropriate.
Okay.
Because we do not want an applicant to be
Absolutely.
Inhibited from applying because they are in fear of being discovered by their current employer.
Right.
Unless they're a finalist.
Keith, would, would you clarify that and get it clear with Mr. Bounds, please? Just so we know for sure and it's on record that we have asked for a ruling on that. Because I don't wanna go through this again. Uh, that's just a, I, I would think it would be a common sense to do this, but you never know anymore, so that's why I'd like the ruling, please.
And, and also, um, if you would, uh, ask him, you know, for a statement, what we can tell applicants who are applying. If they ask if their, if their, um, resumes or whatever may be public. It'd be nice to have a statement that we reply back and we know we're answering it correctly. So for ex- for example, if they, if this will be public record or if it's possible for it to be public record sometime or whatever. I just would like that clarified, 'cause somebody did ask me that too.
So in, in this process, for, if we determine that we need to do Zoom interviews. Who would be conducting those interviews and who would be involved? Would that be the entire council? Would it be staff and maybe a subcommittee of council, uh, what?
That's a decision that council will need to make, yes sir.
Thoughts?
What's your preference? What are your thoughts with regard to that?
Well, I could give you my experience as far as from, from the school district. I mean, um, now, we didn't have Zoom back then. Uh, but we interviewed probably ten, uh, on Zoom. And then we brought in maybe seven to do actual interviews, so.
The entire, the entire board, school, the entire school?
Yeah, the board was involved in the whole thing, yeah.
That makes sense to, makes sense to me.
Okay.
I mean, that's a lot of time, but I mean, you don't have to spend three hours with them. I mean, you can, you can set up, uh, if, if we're, if we have twenty-five quality applicants, we can give them, let's see. Do the math on that, help me with that.
Well, with, we're thinking that the written exercise will narrow the field some.
That's right, okay, you're right, sorry, yeah.
Okay, so
And so will the background investigation possibly too? Or, or we're not gonna hold that until after we narrow it even?
That would be after. So, um, entire council for the Zoom, uh, Zoom interviews, okay?
Yes.
I've also given you, um, a working document. If you will take it, uh, take it apart, look at it as, to use as an evaluation type document. Um, so that we'll have something for, um, you to evaluate the candidates. They have the various categories, everything from applicability of experience to the city's challenges to, um, you know, able to track record. Having a track record and, uh, obtaining grants for the organization. So there's a number of things to evaluate the person on. If there's something that you believe is absolutely non, a non-starter, if you will, please mark that for me. And, um, I'll go with the greatest number of marks.
When, when you're saying non-starter, you mean a question we don't want?
Yes.
Okay, not the person or whatever?
Yes, ma'am, uh, because we're, I'm still, um, this is still a working document and we're trying to get it to where we are evaluating what you guys wanna evaluate.
Benita, I don't, I don't know what questions you have, but I, I'm just gonna raise one that, that I think is vital, that, that all these applicants know. As far as economic development. We are not like a normal city. We can't pull a, a half a cent or a quarter of a cent or any cent from for to use to economic development. Now, there's not a whole lot of those cities in Texas, we happen to be one of them. And I think it's fair that that applicant know that. Because to a certain point, their hands are gonna be tied on economic development, especially from a sales tax standpoint, right now. So I'm not trying to tell you how to do your job.
No, no.
I think it's vital that they know that, because if, if, if they get here or get so far along with the process and go, I had no idea, y'all are part of the only one in the state of Texas that does that. And we, we, we are, here we are, you know?
And at the same time, we would hope that they have done a little homework prior to that.
I would agree, yeah, okay, that's, I'm through.
With regard to, to rating the, the candidates, uh, I intend to, to do some additional work and, and see if there are other, other formats that this has been done on, uh, to try and make your life a little bit easier.
Appreciate it.
Uh, and make sure that we're asking questions and, and weighting things in an appropriate way. Uh, to bring back to, to the full council to approve. I, I just am committed to making sure that this process is, is as objective as it can be. Um, and having a, a fair scoring system is, is important, asking the right questions, uh, to, to glean what the council is looking for in a city manager.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, any more questions?
I'm only one, um, have, have we, we don't have to do it. I, I'm looking at the outsourcing of the background investigation. And we already have a, a, um, an organization or, or in mind, correct?
There are companies out there and we use, the city uses one that we, where we do a, a, a smaller ver- a much smaller version for new employees. Um, and we can ask them about a more, uh, in something that's greater detailed, greater, um, greater information that is pulled. And what the cost would be for that, but it should be, it shouldn't be too bad. Thank you.
Benita, based on your, your timeline here, approximately approximately, not not a specific date, when do you think we're possible to interview candidates? By August first?
Probably not, if we do the background, because the background may take some time, but maybe the middle of August.
Mid-August, okay.
And depending on if we have to do the Zoom, you know, if if the exercise narrows the field quite a bit and we get down to five or six, we may not need to do the Zoom call at all. You may be able to take those six, get in the room, and really go through what they've, the material they've provided you, and maybe come out with four or five.
So I want to make sure I understand my homework, my assignment. Are you ultimately looking to to narrow these variables down in what we're looking for?
Not necessarily. If you believe that they're all valuable, we will absolutely keep them. I just wanted, this is an example for you to use, and I wanted to make sure that you were comfortable with what was being, what was being used to evaluate, what you're going to be using.
You know, if we want to change wording or if we want to think of it, thank you so much.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Discussion? Thank you very much, Ms. I'll enjoy your vacation.
Do we need to do public comment on this?
Do we, anybody have any public comment? There being none, it is six twenty-two. This meeting is.